We have a special guest and thank you Denise. Rep. Garlick will be speaking with us in a bit. And when I got here, I thought all the cars, I thought we had a huge crowd for a meeting. But we have a football game. In a freshman mixer for.
Yeah, it looked like fun.
So that's kind of nice to have. That was a coin hole. So the race is our meeting should ideally get out before the football game. If at all possible, that's a win. So but I'd love to kick off the meeting. Can I get a motion to kick it off?
Some move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second, I would just want to take public input and reminder. Members of the public will be welcome to comment during this public input period. Either through Zoom or here in the room. If you are on Zoom, raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you put your camera on before making any comments. And whether you're on Zoom or in the room, please share your name and your address. And speakers are asked to speak for no more than three minutes. And only on topics under the purview of the school committee. So is there any public input in the room? Or on Zoom?
Nothing on Zoom.
Okay, all right. So that's a good start to the race of the football game. So, okay, great. And then, as I say, why don't we actually, we'll hold on the consent agenda and start off with Denise Garlick. I think that would be great while you're here. Appreciate your coming and, you know, as my understanding, you're going to share a budget update. How it affects us, maybe you can cover a few other topics as well. Welcome and thank you for coming.
Well, I don't know. Do I?
I'd like to sit here. Does that work?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Hi. So I want to say good evening to everyone. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. Before I start, I want to thank each and every one of you for your public service. I actually requested the opportunity to come and speak to you because I bring you what I think a tidings of great news. Your state representative has been nominated and elected to be the House Chair of Education. And I thought, as I was receiving the many calls to travel around the Commonwealth, that it behooved me to come first to the towns that I represent, to be available to you, to share information, to answer any questions, and to make you feel that it matters that your rep is the Chair of Education. I have a handout that I made, very brief. I always trust that school committees have very intense agendas that you're addressing. And I just wanted to speak to you just briefly on the FY twenty-four budget that increased Medfield Local Aid in Chapter seventy. And when I'm looking at this, the header itself should say FY twenty-four. I want you to know that the state budget in education is the largest education budget for the Commonwealth that we have ever seen in the history of Massachusetts. And inherent in part of that is around our focus on early education and childcare. And just today, I have finished a four-hour informational hearing on early education and childcare. And if you want to discuss that further, just let me know. But all politics is local, right? So on that first page, this is a summary of the local aid that has come to Medfield, the Chapter seventy money and the Special Education Circuit Breaker money. Because we're on television and that we don't have a slide for the television, let me just say, in FY twenty-three, the local aid to Medfield was $1,636,000 and one hundred and seventy. The, that money was increased to 1.7 million in additional money. The Chapter seventy money that comes into Medfield is slightly over 6 million in FY twenty-three, which is 6,434,604. In FY twenty-four, which you do know, I'm sure, begins for the state on July 1st through June 30th of the following year. So we are in FY twenty-four right now, okay? Is 6,653,094. And the Special Ed Circuit Breaker for Medfield was a little bit shy of a million dollars last year. It was 948,385. That number isn't released yet because it's based on quarterly reimbursements. And the school committee knows best that that number can change and it can fluctuate a lot. So I can update you on that anytime. We're kind of like, where are we today? Where are we going to be at the end of the year? The FY twenty-four budget, when I talked about it being historic education budget, you all may know, and I am very proud to announce, that it includes the universal school meals, which is universal free breakfast, free lunch for every child of the Commonwealth. This is an incredible investment. It builds on what we learned during COVID and the incredible food insecurity of the children of the Commonwealth. And more important, you all may recall that I'm a nurse, the impact that has on a child's development and certainly the impact it has on a child's ability on a day-to-day basis to learn, right? Hungry children don't learn. Sick children don't learn. This is an incredible investment that Massachusetts has made, along with about eight other states, I believe, that have done the same. The Green School Works program is $50 million for how we're looking at also through COVID. There are so many lessons learned during such a terrible and difficult time. But certainly was around the many schools in our Commonwealth that are not well-prepared for any kind of climate change, that don't have good HVAC systems, don't have air conditioning systems, have malfunctioning heating systems, and the hopes that we can do some of that work and do it with a real lens on green works on that. Looking at a clean economy. The civics program you'll see is more than $4,600,000. This was legislation that was passed in the last three years calling for participation, particularly of our eighth graders in civics programs to raise civic awareness. And I will tell you, even from my own interactions, Medfield students are very, very engaged in civics education and reaching out, whether it is, in my own experience, visiting the State House and learning more about processes and procedures, oftentimes writing to their state representative with a particular issue. And I do hear they're tracking who gets back to them. So as they would, right? The early college money you'll see here is more than $15 million. This is an interesting program and has a great deal to do with the, that high school students can take some college courses for college credit, and it helps them to better transition into college. I actually was at the House Ways and Means hearing and heard from a student from the Springfield area who is now a freshman in college in Connecticut. But it was the early college program. She was from a family where no one had ever attended college. There wasn't a discussion at the dinner table and there was no preparation for her. And she did not believe she could be successful in college, even though teachers and guidance councils were saying, this is a path forward for you. This is something to do. And she took the early college classes, did exceptionally well in them, and then had the courage and the confidence to move forward and now is doing very well in her college that she's currently in. So there is a very strong belief this is a very good tool for us to have in the toolbox for some students. The Special Ed Circuit Breaker is here. I talked about how I don't have the exact numbers for you for this year for Medfield. If you look back in the previous two years, it was those amounts we had talked about in almost a million dollars last year. It is, at a historic level, fully funded at over $504 million. The importance of the Special Ed Circuit Breaker is that it is money that, for a certain amount of students, that exceed the usual formula of learning needs, right? That the school is incurring an increased cost for, that that portion of that increased cost gets returned and reimbursed to the schools. One of the things I'm sure the school committee is struggling with always is you don't get reimbursed to the following year. Hard to anticipate what a child's need might be, who may be in the town presently, who may be coming to the town in October. And the reimbursement comes a year later. I think that's very difficult. I was the Vice Chair of Education several terms ago and had worked on the issue of low incidence of very high-cost students. And it is my belief then, and it's my belief as the Chair now, that the state should accept the cost for those very low incident but very high costs, $300,000, $400,000 costs that a child might need. So I continue to work on that. And then we have on here the school nutrition study. For people that are wondering about the universal program, wondering about universal breakfast and lunch, there's also a very conscious awareness that this has to be high-quality food and it should meet nutritional standards. And then the final page that you have in front of you. As the Education Committee Chair, I'm sure if you're wondering what I'm looking at, we are looking at more than 360 bills that are before the Education Committee. We have divided that up into fourteen hearings. And I know that many people are aware, just from coming to the rep report, right? The legislature has before it over 6,500 bills, somewhere markedly over that. The only way, by the Massachusetts Constitution, every bill has to have a public hearing. The only way you can actually effectively address that is you break those bills up into committees. The committees hold the hearings and then the committees make determinations whether a bill should be seen favorably, unfavorably, or ought not to pass. Go to study, excuse me, not unfavorably. Go to study, which is much more politic in my world to say. Or ought not to pass. And then it is only those bills that get a favorable reading that then advance forward. And these are the areas that we're looking at. I know all of these are important to all of you. And I'm really very ready to answer any question you'd like. And we did put an advertisement at the very end. I do have the Gallic Press that comes out every Thursday that covers our local news in Needham. I represent all of Needham, all of Dover and half of Medfield. Local events that are happening in our town, as well as an opening commentary on something that I believe is pertinent to the people I represent that was happening at the state level. So.
I'm curious about the early education.
Yes.
It was on Jim and Madri today, so it was, when I was listening in the car today. So I'm just curious on, you know, how favorable that is being looked upon and kind of rollout would be expecting? And, you know, how are your colleagues looking on it as far as something that might be phased in in the coming years?
So I am the patron saint of issues that people say they care very deeply about. And then it seems to be incredible work to get them to fund, right? So I've always worked on the issues of health and safety for nurses. I've worked on the issues of people with disabilities. No one has ever said to me they don't support health and safety. No one has ever said to me that they don't support people with disabilities. No one in this Commonwealth who is really thinking about this issue would say they don't support early education and childcare. What we have to do is decide how we're going to do it and most importantly, how we're going to fund it. There was an Early Education Commission that was convened, released a report last June. So that would have been June of '22. The Massachusetts Legislature with the leadership of the House. The House has been a major driver on early education and childcare since the time that Bob Delio was the Speaker of the House. This was something very, very important to him. And we have looked at this issue. The, where we are presently is if we were able to enact everything that is in the Early Education and Childcare Commission report, there is a projected cost of 1.7 billion dollars per year, per year. We've broken off the pieces that we could advance on quickly and been able to operationalize that presently. The federal government during COVID had essentially poured money into the Commonwealth just to sustain the early education and childcare system, right? Because it was vital for the stability of the Commonwealth and it was going to be imperative as people return to the workplace that that system would be in place. When the emergency COVID measures were lifted, the federal government no longer is funding that. Massachusetts continued that federal funding for this year in terms of stability, right? We had all that money. We were funding everybody. We were funding the subsidized programs. We were funding the private pay programs. We were funding the resource centers. We were funding everything with the federal money. Federal money disappears. Massachusetts has continued to do that in terms of stability, seeking for us to define what early education and childcare is actually going to look like and how we're going to be able to afford that. I am very clear as the Chair of Education that it is in the very best interests of our children, of Massachusetts families, of the business community, of the workforce needs, that we have a strong early education and childcare system in Massachusetts. I also know very seriously that we are going to have to have a sustainable source of revenue for that. This is not something that every year you can reach into the state budget and ask for 1.5 billion dollars, right? So we're going to have to figure out what that sustainable system looks like. And then given what that looks like, we're going to know how much we can do.
Thank you for all of this and coming to speak to us and congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you.
I appreciate the breakdown of the different categories. And I'm wondering, you know, in particular in special education, is there a particular bill that is sort of like the big thing that everybody is sort of talking about right now? That, you know, has the most momentum and the most interest in it?
So. I am the mother of an individual with significant developmental disabilities. And I am the elected Chair of the Permanent Funded Commission on Individuals with Disabilities in the Commonwealth that is making many strides. I will share with you that I was disappointed in the public hearing and how few bills we are actually seeing related to special education. For you and as the school committee, what you did see was the state moving to increase the tuition on the special education schools. That, I believe, was we need to increase the tuition for those special education schools. They need to work on their workforce issues. They need to try and bring those educators on par with other educators. I am, to this day, appalled at actually how that happened through, through the executive branch under the previous governor. I think we caught school committees, we caught our superintendents, very unaware. I think that that was unnecessary and caused more chaos than it should have. But in general, I wish I saw much more around special education for students. What I do know, although a bill should be offering a solution, right? You identify a problem, the bill should be a solution. So I don't see the bills that I think we should be seeing. What I do know is many people are discussing the problems. And for this school committee, like every other school committee in the Commonwealth, I am sure you're aware of the studies that we are beginning to see about the special education needs of small children coming through COVID, the lack of socialization they might have had, the dysregulation we're seeing in these early and primary grades that we haven't seen before. And for children of every age, right? We are seeing a greater need around their mental health issues. But it's for every age. It's from very small children experiencing trauma for a variety of reasons through all of, through K through 12. You know, I think sometimes we just want to put that tag on adolescents. That is on all of our children. And my understanding from people that are on the ground doing the work, it's more dramatic than anything we have experienced before. So I wish there was more discussion as we talked about that. We are putting significant money into the mental health issues. And I am very mindful that there are, there are people who are expressing concerns about many issues happening in schools, depending upon that person's individual orientation to the issues. But universally, depending on schools to fix everything. You know, our schools are not going to be able to fix all of the mental health issues of all of our children all by yourselves. And so we have to look at where those partnerships are really going to be. I believe there's great strength in community organizations and we need to build those partnerships.
As you talked about special ed, I almost in my brain was thinking about the mental health as well. Maybe as one, you know, maybe a little more flat, one goes up. But I also, what, how are you thinking about that? Like, you know, I'll even say one area. I mean, you're right, we can't fund it, all of it. We can lead in some areas in the schools. And I'm thinking some of that even more like social media and/or mobile in some cases. We, at the school committee, sometimes also look for the state to say how, you know, how can we help or how can we help control, educate in those areas? So I'm just wondering.
And you're thinking about mental health needs, Tim?
Yeah, mental health. And when I mentioned social media, things like that, things that may be contributing. Contributing factors that are, you know, that where it helps for us to lead and educate others as to.
So. Yeah, I think people with much more experience than me would help us to see the incredible strength of social emotional curriculums that begin at the kindergarten level or earlier. And I often think that these issues around mental health are not exhibited just during school time, right? These issues are happening for this child around the clock, on weekends. And we can't solve it by only dealing with the children. And I think we need very much to involve families in all of these decisions, helping to educate people around what decision-making looks like. Well, how do you actually handle something that isn't going real well? Something that you're not automatically successful at as a third grader, right? How do you help your third grader to get through that, right? How do you help your adolescent dealing with the issues around social media? I, separate from the other roles, I am the chief sponsor of a bill that is trying to get at the algorithms that companies are using to target our children with the information they're sending. And when we look at the rate of depression and anxiety in our adolescents, as well as the very real risk of suicide as a result of those things, our children are being targeted by companies. And it's very difficult to figure out how that's happening and where that's happening, what to do about that. There is a lot of discussion, not in my committee, but within the State House about social media and how we can address that and what's appropriate for us to do. I think it is an issue that I'm sure school committees are wrestling with very, very seriously. And we've seen some pretty dramatic actions by some school systems in the Commonwealth in dealing with cell phones and those other issues. But you're right about the social media. And, but it's why I bring us back to these community relationships too. Because our children are in school a certain amount of time. And maybe they're very different when they're home in the family some of the time, which my brother was very much like that. But they're in the community 24/7. And where all of the safeguards that the community can build that support the parent, that support the child, that support the school system, that support the school committee, where are all those things? And I think we have to build it ourselves from the ground up.
No, and we're thinking about it in similar ways. We've had amongst our committees, some of those conversations around, hey, how can we help lead, help educate, given the role we have? And recognize that a lot of that, you know, they're only in the school so long. But no, I think that.
And I'll tell you, in my community, I was the Chair of our Board of Health. And we had four adolescents who died of suicide in an 18-month period. And we formed the Coalition in Needham for Suicide Prevention. It was the entire community. The police chief was on it as well as the school administration people. The civic organization was on it as well as a parent. You know, it was, it's very broad. And it was primarily community people. We had some experts. We actually had one expert out of Riverside Community Trauma Care that really informed what we were doing. But it was the community members. This belonged to us and it was the community members who were seated at that table. And when we were doing that work, we began to understand the community more clearly. We then, we did that work for several years. The most important principle that I held, I chaired that coalition, was that we were never going to achieve our goal until we could talk about it on the soccer sideline. Let's talk suicide prevention on the soccer sideline. Let's talk about it at the opening football game when you're waiting at halftime, right? Turn to your neighbor. This is, this is an issue that belongs to all of us. I think we have to do this with the mental health issue. People are throwing that term around, right? Everybody wants to talk to me about mental health. And I keep saying to people, well, what does that mean to you, right? And when you actually ask that question, there's a lot of different answers. There's a lot going on. So we have to actually talk to each other. We have to figure out what it is and then we have to figure out how we come together to work on it. And we have to do all of that comprehensive work pretty quickly, I think.
As you mentioned, like some districts have done like, I forget the word you used, like extreme. Is that, are they doing anything other than like zero phone, like zero tolerance for phone? But you mentioned some districts have like taken steps and I forget the word you used.
Right.
Is that just like zero tolerance or have you seen any other like creative ideas?
No, there is a school system in the Commonwealth that when students walk into the high school, they have to pass over their phone. Their phones are put into individual lock boxes and are unavailable to them until the end of the school day. So that's happening. There's other schools that are doing a variation on that, where you can use your cellphone only in certain areas, you know? But, you know, I don't know what I think of those things yet. But I do know people are trying a variety of ways to deal with it.
I think the hardware isolation is one step. And then, you know, the next step is some of that homeschool connection too, right? How they open the lanes of communication to talk about helping students use these devices responsibly? Because they're going to be with them for the rest of their lives. So taking them away won't really help that so much. But the, you know, how do the parent, how do you engage parents at home to engage in the common language, being used in the schools, at home? And, you know, looking for the right things, like informing, informing teachers and parents with the same tools that they're tracking our students with, the same technology can be used to inform, you know, those people too. So I think, you know, it's finding the right balance within our communities to do that.
The problem with social media is there's so much pro and con, right? So at the same time, we may be very concerned about students using social media in the classroom or using it in ways that bully or intimidate classmates or do something like that. We also know that there's many parents that want to know that they can have quick access to their child, given the number of issues we have in the country today, particularly around school shootings, right? So I mean, there's no easy answer here. There's no easy answer.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to take the opportunity to thank Denise for, you know, always, always fighting for Medfield and always fighting for the things that really are important to us. And I put four points down, I thought, that were really important in this budget. And you touched upon a few of them. Obviously, the universal free meals is something that is really important, a moral imperative for our state, right? And I think that you guys did a wonderful job of that. Also increasing our Chapter seventy minimum aid. So we were a minimum aid district. That's what we typically get. But it was $30 and they, you know, she worked real hard to get that up to 16. We had. that up to 60 and we had conversations during the budget process. The fully funding of Circuit Breaker is so critical because we asked for years and years and years for transportation to be a part of that. And then through Denise and other members' leadership, that's now a part of Circuit Breaker. So, now we get reimbursement on the transportation as well, which is fairly costly depending on where the child is going. And the last one that I thought, I don't want to count our chickens, but is important to us hopefully at some point in Medfield is the fact that there's $100 million additional money for MSBA in their, in their funding, which is really important. As we know, we have a building that we need to replace and there are many other communities that have the same. So, I just really want to thank you for your ongoing support of Medfield and really focusing on the things that are important to us. It's really appreciated.
And I appreciate you saying that. And of all these things, I'm the patron saint of something that probably only matters to school committees, right, is for, I think, one, two, three, four, five, close to six years with Jeff, with Superintendent from Needham and at the time, the Superintendent from Dover, we brought forward a bill on operational efficiency for schools, right? And the bill, the bill actually dealt with procurement and it was to increase the procurement and to look at the way now that you actually buy school supplies and give you more opportunity to make better use of your dollars. And it was a big, long struggle that went on and on and we, and we kept at it and we kept at it and we kept at it. And just, this is an insight into kind of my life in these processes. It is 2:00 in the morning, the House has passed the bill, I'm trying to get the bill to, on the floor of the Senate, which I'm not in the Senate, right? I mean, like it has to get there, right? And I called Mary Bork. First, I texted her and said, are you awake? She calls back immediately, she is awake, right? She had an associate who was very connected to the Senate and I said, you have to call him right now. And she said to me, well, I'll call him in the morning. And I said, the morning is too late. You're up, I'm up, call him. And she did and that bill got to the Senate floor and in the last minutes of the session, that bill got passed. And it's a nuts and bolts bill, but I think it makes a difference. I'm proud of the work.
It sure does.
But I think.
You stuck with it, not the rest of us. You, you kept fighting, 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 so it was really, really important that you did that.
Yeah, but happy to do that, happy to do that.
And I will also add too that, you know, this is, I've been doing this for a while and worked with many, many folks in the legislature for different, different communities. And Denise is the only one that always reaches out to our superintendents and wants to get our feedback, wants to hear what we think about certain things. And now that she's Chair of Joint Education, I think that's going to be even more valuable for us because I know she always wants to get our perspective on things, which isn't the norm. So, we appreciate that as well.
Always ready to listen and learn, always.
So, knowing that you have a lot of bills in front of you right now, which ones are you most excited about or which ones are you looking forward to coming to the table and trying to work towards improving things?
So, this early education in childcare is something that I believe is important, but I've been tasked with. So, I'm taking it very seriously. Yeah, I, I think it is something that we really want to make sure that the Commonwealth can move in the right direction and that we can do it in a way that is feasible to do it. So, I'm thinking about that a lot. I'm, there's a whole variety of bills that when we're looking at the, the issue around our children's mental health, the issue around school nurses, because I'm a nurse, is very, very important to me. And I feel like that, that there needs to be more support. But more than that, I have a bill that allows for, that nurses, school nurses are giving direct service care that they can be reimbursed for. No, not they, that the school, because the school would be reimbursed for. Right now, actually, some schools are doing this and the money is going to the municipality and it's not going into the schools, it's not coming back.
We do Medicaid reimbursement, goes right to the municipality.
So, I think that's something, it's one of those nuts and bolts thing that isn't going to get the headline and it's not going to be on Jim and Marjorie, right? But it could be a major difference for us. But the, the major barrier to that is that it's a cumbersome, time-consuming process that the school nurses themselves don't have time for. So, I'm working on that bill and hoping that we can find a way, in my opinion, we could fund administrative assistance for a fraction of that cost and make, make back the money that we, we deserve through the federal government. It's not even state dollars, it's federal dollars. I love federal dollars. But I think that's very important. And, you know, there's a whole variety of really hard-hitting bills with major hearings that are coming up this fall and I will know more when I hear more.
I just want to make sure everyone's covered.
Oh, I have a million things I could talk to her about.
Yes.
My, the only other one was about the early college money. You had the example of the family in Springfield. Does that come to Medfield at all or is that for districts that are less affluent than ours?
So, it's, it's not based on affluence, it's based on actually having the program. And I don't believe we have an early college program.
So, we have a partnership with Regis College right now.
Oh, we do, wonderful.
So, it's for any students in high school that are looking to get an education. So, we started it last spring, this is the first fall that we're doing it. How many are in that? How many kids are participating?
Last spring, we had seven students starting the next class, probably a eighth or a ninth or a semester or two, then a summer session, one remaining, so a lot of them.
And so, does either fund it through some state money or do we do that on our own?
We got a grant for that.
We got a grant.
And that's the state money, yeah.
I guess I have to ask the one, just as you're here before thanking you, I did one comment, but any advice or best practices you've seen as, as we kind of get towards this MSBA potential decision or other, you know, districts as they go to their town and try to get the support for, for new schools and whatnot? And I'm sure you saw what went on a few years ago. I'm not looking for a silver bullet here or anything like that.
The MSBA needs to clearly know that this is a united community that is moving forward together in the best interest of their children. In the town of Needham, we were seeking to build a new elementary school. There was, MSBA was moving forward with us. We had, we became divided about the site and the MSBA evaporated on us and they wouldn't deal with us while we were not a united community. And we had to stop, we had to communicate better, we had to be more innovative about what we were thinking about and then we got the support of MSBA. So, it's the most important thing you can do.
That's the school that's where the turkey arm used to be?
Yes, it is.
I drove past that school, I cannot believe.
Kind of looks like early college.
It's great inside, should be detoured.
Yeah, we did.
Frankly, I still miss the turkey place. That's just me.
Yeah. It, it's extraordinary and the amount of, it, it looks bigger, to be honest with you, there's less than 600 students in there. It looks bigger because it's not deep.
Right.
So, it had to be wide because behind it is wetlands. And I mean, you know, that, that was high. But when we're talking about special education needs, one of the things that's in the front of that building is they built a sensory garden. And it is just the most wonderful place to be and, and every season it changes. But there were all these things built into the school itself that our community benefits as well, which I think is great, you know?
No, I appreciate it. I love the advice we've heard. I also.
I know where you're going with that, Tim. You ask her to make the 2:00 AM call and.
No, no. I just.
I can call you too.
No, please do. Finally, no, just thank you. I also really love going back to community and recognizing that it's not, some of these topics, it is more about the community, which is an area. Feel free to stick around whether it's for us or the, the football game, but we'll be talking about our goals in a bit and not to get off agenda, but that, that's such a big area for us as well.
With your permission, I'll circle back to the superintendent on your goals. I haven't seen the homestead for a while today. I just wanted to very sincerely say how much I appreciate the work of the school committee here in Medfield, Dover, Needham, across the Commonwealth. In my own experience, you know, I was on the Select Board in Needham and we worked really hard. We couldn't hold a feather to how hard the school committee was working. I appreciate what you're doing, the hours it takes, the kind of outreach it's taking for each of you. And everything's at stake, right? Everything, I mean, if our children are at stake, then everything's at stake. But I just want to really be sincere in saying thank you for what you're doing.
Well, I'll echo, I'll echo Jeff's words about yourself, like you always, you show up at every election day, you're at all of our events, you answer my phone call, I think, until you block me, which I understand.
Never.
All of our Eagle Scout.
Yes.
Yep. So, you're, we appreciate your presence too, support.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Denise.
Okay.
Great to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The really fun stuff, we can talk about consent agenda.
Yeah.
That was, that was great. So, consent agenda, I think it's relative, let me just swap my machine here for one second. What's that?
Right there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, that's, I was just saying, it's approval of the regular meeting minutes for August 28th and the Medfield High School Student Activity Account, new sub and account request and maybe you can speak to that.
Michael was actually going to, if you wanted. So, let's listen to that and then we'll just see if there's any reason to pull anything out.
So, any time you could, figure it out before I do, I should approach that high school and say, I want to add to the student activity account, would be used to apply it. Approve that in order for them to start that account. So, this came to us from Robert.
Right.
And, and it's, it's organized, it has a committee and, but in order for them to move forward, it has to be approved by the school committee.
The only, just as I read it too, so is it, so this is, it is new, it's a new, it can, completely new.
It's a new line item, yeah.
It says the club's existed, they just don't have money.
It has existed for a long, long time, but they didn't have anyone that was, was doing it.
Correct.
And now we have someone that's going to lead that, who is a attorney and a teacher here, so.
No, it's awesome.
It's great.
What is approving like the fee for that, to go to the event, right? Because that's already a stipend position, right?
No, we're talking about establishing a line item.
So, they can put the money into that.
So, they can put money in and they can take money of, you know, otherwise they're not allowed to.
Any other questions?
No.
And is there any, anybody want to carve anything out of consent agenda or?
It just says in the meeting minutes, right?
Yep.
So, otherwise I would say, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown in the agenda?
Some moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, great. So, I think we're going to talk about the policy update, but today it's a little more on a couple of specific policies, which is not unusual. So, while the agenda says I would have provided, Dr. Marsden was going to talk a little bit about a couple of policies.
Sure, so we have a, we have a couple of policies that, one, the wellness policy and the other, the service animal policy. Both, the wellness policy was developed with the Wellness Committee last year and then we as a leadership team went through it with them after they, they brought it to us. So, this is a revamp of the one from, I believe, 2017. Our nurse leader, Brittany Hardeman, is here. She, she'll be happy to give a couple of highlights and kind of the process that was, you know, a part of that and then she will answer any questions that you have. And then the same token, service animal policy, Mary's here as well, so she can certainly answer any questions you may have around the service animal policy. We need to get that in place this fall because we have a, a service animal that's in the high school. We need to make sure we do that. But this isn't, this is separate from a therapy dog like Franklin at, we luck, this is a service animal assigned to a student.
Franklin.
Sure. Yeah, it would be great. And this, just for our group too, this is informational at this stage. There's a draft there, but it's, let's understand the why.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Brittany Hardeman. For those that don't know me, I'm the high school full-time nurse and have taken over trying to fill big shoes of Kathy Thompson who retired last year, so I'm the school nurse leader as well. So, yeah, the wellness policy is reviewed every three years by the Health Advisory Committee, which is made up of students, parents, teachers, administrators, food service professionals, health professionals and other interested community members. So, we got together over this past year. We didn't really make any major changes. The wellness policy consists of things like physical education and physical activity, nutritional education and wellness promotion, nutrition standards for school meals, nutrition standards for competitive foods, a little bit about school health services and guidance department services, which the language was changed. I think it's reflected in the one that went out, it's now school counselors. So, a lot of the updates were just changes to language, language pieces to be current, not any major changes to the policy. I will say that I think we expanded upon health services a little bit more and school counseling services. So, there's just more information in our wellness policy about what those people and services do to support children in our schools for overall social emotional wellness and physical health as well. So, one of the big things I think that rolled out earlier at the elementary schools that's kind of catching up at the high school that you just might hear about is we're really trying to make sure that food doesn't come into the school from the outside so that, you know, parents can't send in cupcakes for birthdays, that kind of phased out a while ago. But at the high school too, if there's food in the classroom that's being brought in by teachers, it really needs to be curriculum-based and approved by the school nurses first just for allergy reasons and equity issues. So, that's something that's, you know, just really trying to educate everybody on that this year and make sure that that happens. And I think that's really it. I can go into more detail, but I think you guys received it. I don't know if you have questions or want me to go into more detail about any of the sections of it or if you have any questions about it.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
And it's just more probably self-education here, but it was really the last piece on transition programming. It speaks to the high school and middle school offering support for students that have missed significant time. My, my note here was simply, is that just not applicable for the elementary schools? Is that, it doesn't, it's not apples to apples? Does it cost, like why is that just the middle school and high school?
So, I might have to defer to them for that, but yes, the middle school has a Bridges Program and the high school has RISE. So, I think it might just be curriculum because the curriculum is heavier and.
It's really based on the needs of the students.
Yeah.
So, we, it started with RISE at the high school because we, we started to see students that needed to have that support when they're coming back from either hospitalization or being out for significant time, whatever that might be. And before we put the RISE in place, it was in, it was a welcome back meeting and good luck, you know, but that we didn't think that was really good. So, we wanted to make sure that, we wanted to have a process in which kids could transition back before they get into the rigors of school. And we've just, we've seen behaviors and some things that we need to have at the, at middle school and kids missing school at the middle school. So, we want, we brought that down, is that two years ago, Mary?
Midway through.
Yeah, so we, we did that there. So, it's really just on, based on student need.
Okay.
I think it's a lot of academic support that we see here at the high school, so it might just be not academically that heavy when you're out in elementary too.
That's fair, thank you.
Yeah? Any other questions about the wellness policy?
You said that like the counseling department stuff has changed and obviously we just kind of heard from our rep about the mental health stuff. So, can you just highlight what, what changed and like, under what, like the school counseling role, like, I just don't know what's different, I guess.
Okay.
Because I wasn't here.
So, it was guidance, we, everything was guidance, counselors.
Oh, yeah.
So, we changed the school counselor.
We changed the wording, yeah.
So, just more wording.
Oh, okay.
In terms of, you know, how we, to be consistent with the licensure.
Yeah.
And how they recognize in the department.
But do we always have like that, we had that like signs of suicide program for a while and some of this stuff is highlighted? Okay, cool. I just don't know, I haven't been around that much.
Yeah, I was referencing simply the word. Guidance was changed to school counselors, but I do think we also added, it looks like the social emotional learning section was added to reflect the importance of this concept to overall wellness and wellbeing.
Okay.
And just MPS's commitment to this. I don't think that was in there before and.
We have school adjustment counselors, the middle school and high school now, which we didn't have before, so.
Yeah.
We definitely have additional counseling staff.
Yeah, so, yeah, about the staff, yep.
Yeah, we're just referencing now we call school counselors instead of guidance, but doesn't have that much major change.
No, but we did add some stuff just to give more information in the wellness policy about, you're right, there are some changes too, just adding more language in there to explain exactly. just adding more language in there to explain exactly the role of them, and, yeah, and social, emotional learning and whatnot. Um, and I think that was about it, yeah.
And this is only the informational piece too, so we have a couple more meetings right then that we can, yeah, go through it? Okay. Yeah, I mean, informational, it's in our packet. I think first reading officially go through it. If there are questions, we can, we can talk about them, and ideally second reading vote, which would be, which would follow. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, thank you so much.
Yeah.
And then the service animals and schools policy. So we have worked with, um, our attorneys on this. Uh, M E S C has a model policy, and then our attorneys took a look at it, and they felt like they need to ask some additional, um, language in here for the district. So, again, it's informational at this point, and we'll have the first and second reading, but I know that Mary's been really involved in this. If you have any questions, she'd be happy to answer anything out.
Pretty straightforward.
We don't, our staff don't walk the dogs if they need to go out. Clearly stated right here.
It's, it's all covered.
It was my own ignorance that miniature horses were available as service animals. I did not know that.
Sam, I was almost surprised by that.
Neither did we. I think that probably caught everybody's eyes.
Yeah, I didn't, I had no idea they were.
The chinchilla was probably the oddest one I've seen come across.
Yes, so they speak about the, the only two animals that can be certified as service animals are the two, as they are listed in the policy. Um, there's many different types of animals that are therapy animals, but, um, in order to, to have a service animal, you have to have the animal performing a specific service that they are able to do for a student that we wouldn't be able to necessarily meet in, in another manner. Um, and that's why it's kind of pretty spelled out in terms of the specificity of, of why and how, and then, you know, what, what we'll be doing to support the process as well.
Just as we, as you were kind of putting it together, is there much precedent out there in other schools?
I think it's starting to become a precedent. I think the other piece that, that was becoming a precedent, which is why a lot of schools are starting to adopt it, is, um, what is a service animal versus a therapy animal? Um, and how are we, as a district, kind of, um, making the distinction in terms of what, what needs to be in school in order to perform a service, in order for the student to access, um, the educational environment? And what may be a supportive animal but may not necessarily need to be within the school district? So the, the state and feds have put a lot of, um, work into kind of determining what are truly, you know, um, service animals that have the ability to be certified and have the ability to prove that they are kind of doing this service versus what might be a therapy animal? Um, and then allowing school districts to develop policies to kind of support that, just because we want to make sure that students have what they need to be, um, able to access the educational environment, but also make sure that everyone else, um, is able to, you know, engage in learning as well.
None of that, I'm okay, and thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Any other items since posting?
Uh, we just had that one, uh, the donation about outdated curriculum materials, which requires a vote of the committee. Um, in your materials, excuse me, you had a memo from Christine Power. As a result, our recent elementary mathematics program adoption, our previous curriculum envisions mathematics as no longer in use and no value to us. I request the following envisioned teacher's edition, student workbooks, and the attachment has all the list of them. Be approved for donation to Bay State Books, a local organization focused on sustainability, recycling, and supportive educational initiatives. So I ask that you, uh, vote to allow us to donate those to Bay State Books.
Is that our usual course of action?
See, that or you throw them away. But we felt it was important to put them to use and donate them.
Motion to donate books.
Do I, yeah, do I hear a motion for her to donate outdated materials as written?
Some moved.
Um, no. As a general rule, um, we, the policies, we can ask during public input if there's any need for public input prior to a vote. Um, I, as a general rule though, I think is also a courtesy. I'm, I'm okay if, if you have, um, comments on this before we vote, I'm, I'm open to that. Just please, um, you know, continue to follow the guidelines of public input.
I mean, the policy is before votes, so, I mean, the only thing...
We're talking about the poli, the donation of outdated materials and not the policies of a vote.
Yep. So I, I just want to give a plug for a nonprofit organization that the district may want to consider in the future, not necessarily for this one. It's a group called More Than Words out of Waltham. They are a nonprofit. Um, Bay State Books is a for-profit. And, um, More Than Words is a, um, a youth-supporting group that actually puts kids from the, um, within the juvenile justice system and, and different types of homeless youth to work. They actually learn how to run a business by working at this organization in Waltham. So I just, I just want to put it on the radar for any future book donations, not for, necessarily for this one. Because it's a great organization.
Okay, thank you. What's next? One more time?
One more time. More than Words.
More than Words in Waltham.
Welcome.
Thanks, Chris.
Waltham.
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 We're welcome.
Thank you. Any other comments or anything on the, that we've opened it?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, so I, again, do I hear a, um, a motion for the donation of outdated materials as written in the packet? Some moved?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, cool. All right, thank you. We have no other items. Mr. Chair. Okay, well, that's awesome, because we're going to old business, and you get to, you are up for, um, a little bit of a conversation again on the, um, we've, we've been talking about the strategic plan and kind of focus areas for this year. So I think you have, yeah, a presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we had, at a previous meeting, discussed that at the September meeting, we'd get together and I would highlight, you know, what the priorities are from our strategic plan for the 23, 24 school year. Michael, next slide, please. So, during the summer, as you know, we got the, the draft from, from T L A, our consultants, and you folks approved the strategic plan in July 24th, um, and then the leadership team met in August. So we were really trying to get together, take a look at the plan again as a whole, and decide what the most important priorities were for the year, because we're the ones that are gonna be implementing a lot of what's going on. So, um, we subdivided into groups, so we had groups that were not just building base, but we mixed up all the leadership team members, um, and we reviewed the priorities that were in the plan. So we took some time to do that. Um, we reported out to the entire group, you know, what they thought, each group thought was the most important priorities for the 23, 24 school year, um, and then we had conversations about that, and we got to a consensus. So, um, if a group said that they wanted X, Y, and Z, and we didn't agree with that, other people didn't agree with it, we talked about it, decided why it was important to start this year, or why it could wait to next year, and then we had some agreements on that. Um, and then we determined some of those focus areas for each priority, um, and put those together in a list, and that's what I'm gonna go through with you today. So our first priority that we came, that came into the plan was the safety and belonging. Um, we thought that was a really important one for us to start with. So we looked at, um, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, and 1.4 initially as ones that were really important. So we were gonna focus on, um, evaluate the current practices to support student staff, student staff well-being, and we're gonna gather data this year. That was an important piece of 23, 24, and we utilized the Panorama surveys. So we would do that in the fall and possibly in the spring again, to gather, um, data from that and, and see where we are as a baseline information. We also wanted to promote the sense of belonging, which we felt was really important for this year, to look at cultural responsive practices and professional development, um, move toward a full-day kindergarten for all. We've, we've done some work around that already for this year, but we need to have a more permanent solution for that. Um, and then we felt it was important to incorporate the student voice through advisories in grades six through 12. Um, and then looking at aligning our D E I efforts, efforts in 1.3. So review the task force model and faculty and staff representatives at each school. So we're looking at, um, how we want to approach this going forward. So there's, um, some conversation that we're having about, um, taking the S E L task force and D E I and putting them together, because we, we talk about a lot of the same issues, a lot of the same things, uh, and making that one group in, in, whether it's a belonging task force, whatever that might look like, um, that's what we're looking at for this year, is trying to decide what we're gonna do, but to really, um, get that going again, have those conversations with our community. And then examine school safety, which I think is a really important one that we've talked about, 1.4. So reinstating the S R O position, which, as you know, has been reinstated by the police department. Um, even though it's, it's, it's almost every day, uh, when it's, when our S R O is not, um, on duty that particular day, there will be overtime offered to folks that, uh, police officers to come in and work with the schools on those days. And it's really based on, um, the schedule of the S R O, because they're on a four-day on, two-day off schedule at the police department. So there might be some school days where she's not working, but we'd have, um, police department and officers backfill that for us. So that was great, I mean, it's a lot better than we had last year. So it's a step in the right direction. Um, we're looking at having a revised or a school committee policy around cameras, especially in, inside of schools. Um, that came up during our conversation when we developed the plan. Um, additional safety professional development, it's been a few years since we've, we've done some, um, outside professional development with our teachers and staff. Uh, we do do it for new staff when they come in during their, their orientation the first couple of days, but we, we thought everyone might need a refresher, so we're gonna work on that for this year. And then something new, the town safety committee. Uh, as you know, I've been working with the Police Chiefs Association and their, um, their school safety committee, uh, and their three superintendents on that. And one of the things that they've recommended, have some real good success with, is having a safety committee. So I reached out to the chiefs, they're, they're all for it, they're excited, we're gonna meet in a couple of weeks and start a monthly meeting, which we talk about school safety issues from the first responder perspective, both police and fire. So that's gonna be, um, starting at, at the end of this month. And then lastly on safety and belonging, something that I know you folks are really interested in, is looking at our school, school start times, um, establishing that committee, a process and a timeline, um, to get that going this fall, and then look at a possible recommendation in June of '24, and give folks, if there is a change, give folks a, a long amount of time, almost a year, to kind of plan for that and make some arrangements if, if we do go in that direction. Um, the next priority was community engagement and communication. Um, 2.1 was developing a comprehensive internal and external communication plan. So we need to review the practices in each, within each building. I think a lot of the feedback we got from parents was that, uh, if you have multiple kids in the elementary schools, the teachers might be communicating in multiple ways, and sometimes it involves different apps, and that's confusing for folks. So if we can kind of make sure we have a consistent practice. Um, and then complete a comprehensive plan for the entire district, both internally and externally, and then review those recommendations, implement them as we can. So we're looking at, at doing that, uh, later in the fall, and, um, and doing assessment of where we are communication-wise in each building and get that moving. Um, consistently communicate our core values. We, we talked about creating a, a visual in every classroom, incorporate core values in the meetings and practices. I think that, um, once we get the final version of our strategic plan and, and the, the version that is done with the, with the graphic designer, um, we'll be able to put together those posters that we talked about on the opening day for every single teacher in every single classroom, so that's a reminder of our mission, our vision and our core values within the district. Um, explore the website update, so we've been working with Aptogee on that. Um, they have, we were one of the first ones in the state to work with Aptogee, but now they've exploded, and they're, they're everywhere. And they've done some really good, um, refreshes and upgrades on their websites. We want to, um, take a look at some of the new options that they have that weren't available when we signed on with them a few years ago. So we're gonna work with them, and I know Owen's been talking with them to get that going. Um, and I think the home and school connection, I think one thing that was really important to us, uh, during the last negotiations was to, um, include middle school and high school conferences, which have never happened before in this district. So we wanted to make sure that we could have that home-school connection at those upper levels and not just have them at the, at the elementary school. So that's been exciting. Um, there, there was two separate committees last school year, one for the middle school, one for the high school, that were developing how they were gonna do that. Uh, we're gonna have some software for parents to sign on, and we're looking forward to two sets of conferences, um, one in the fall and one in the spring for middle school and high school, uh, parents. And then continue our work with school-based organizations. I think, you know, we do a really good job partnering with, with many of our organizations and just kind of keep, keep that, especially, um, the work that we've done with outreach. Uh, they've been incredibly supportive, and we've worked really well with them over the last few years. So keep, make sure we keep that partnership going. In terms of curriculum instruction and assessment, areas that we thought were really important, we're continually reviewing the curriculum and look for vertical and horizontal alignment. So that vertical alignment is making sure grade, 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 it's all aligned. But that horizontal alignment is making sure that within the grade, among the classrooms, we have that, um, curriculum that is aligned. So we want to create vertical teams for language arts this year, um, update the curriculum maps for both Blake and the middle high scho, and the high school, and then look at doing that, um, in future years at the elementary. Um, and then establish a formalized curriculum review process. So we've been, um, we did our elementary math last year, we're looking at elementary, uh, language arts this year and next year, but we want to establish a, um, a process that does it at the secondary level as well, so it's formalized, and people can plan on that, and we can plan on it for budgets as well going forward. Um, identify timely professional development needs. So we're, we're in the middle of evaluating needs right now and seeing where folks are. We have a schedule for this year for professional development, but we have a P D committee of teachers that meet with Christine, and really want to organize that again going forward. And then, just remind everyone that we do have pretty good P D opportunities in the district, not just, um, going out and, and going to a conference, but also, um, we have curriculum meetings, department head meetings, faculty meetings, common planning time, in-service. So there's many opportunities that we have for professional development and work with our staff on that. Um, evaluate our current multi-tiered, uh, system of support, also called N T S S. Uh, right now, we're still working through that right now. Um, so this year is to really finalize that framework, and Mary's done a great job with that, working with a team of teachers, and then implement next year, 24, 25, professional development, so folks are, are, again, that, N T S S is just providing those, those scaffolds and support for, for kids that need that extra support. Um, 3.5 is just investigating and aligned pre-K to 12-plus social, emotional learning curriculum. Uh, we started looking at that a little bit, but I think what we need to do this year is create a subcommittee, um, of teachers that want to look at that, a subcommittee of the S E L task force, if we go in that direction, and, and start to look at curriculum. There's a lot of curriculum out there, but as Denise said earlier in her presentation, looking at a curriculum that starts early at pre-K, kindergarten, and goes all the way through grade 12, so there's a continuum of learning experiences for all kids as we go through that. So that is something that's important to us. If we look at the plan, we looked at 24, 25, um, as a potential for implementing that curriculum, but spending some time this year, um, reviewing that process. Um, and then something we've been working on for the last three or four years that we have to continue to, to work on and do better with student transitions, if we're gonna continue to have the, the grade setup that we have in elementary, and also the, the transition that goes from eight to nine, which is a bear everywhere. Um, it's not just a bear here, is just to continue, um, to work with that. And, and we've done some good things, like, our, our, um, school counselors at the high school meet with every eighth grader before they come up, so they have a, a name and a face and a relationship right from day one. Um, and that started a couple of years ago, and they've done some really good things with that too. But we have to continue to work on the student transitions, and, because our kids go through a lot of them here, and making sure that, um, they're as smooth as possible for everyone. And then lastly, our last, um, focus area, finance facilities and personnel. Um, develop long-term sustainable budget strategies to address the district needs. Um, the energy efficiencies, which is something that Mike has been working hard on with, with the energy committee, and continue to work on solar projects. Um, continue our partnership, uh, with the warrant committee and town leadership. I think we have a really good relationship with them and continue to foster that. I know that, uh, they've reached out to us in, meeting the warrant committee, and they, they want to start the process earlier this year. So typically, we start the budget process in November, and they would like to start end of November, or end of September, early October, which is, um, very early for us, especially when we're trying to close up the fiscal year for end-of-year reports and doing all that, which is due the end of September. So hopefully it'll be right after that, so we can finish one and do the other. Um, and then, uh, look at the M T A Special Education Staffing Recommendations. If you remember, we took that, that report at the meeting, I think it was a July meeting, we talked about that report, that, um, there was a, an agreement in the last contract that there would be a group that would meet to have additional recommendations for, um, special education staffing. Uh, and that, if you remember on the, the, uh, first meeting we had with the, the update on the staffing, we had two additional special education positions that were driven by I A Ps. Um, some of that fits into some of these recommendations, so I think, uh, we'll look at that again this year and see in the F Y 25 budget what, what we can put in there. The five-year capital plan, I think what's, what's really obvious is, is looking at Dale Street again and see what we can do with that project, uh, whether it's, uh, working with the S B C, whether it's something with M S B A or something on our own, um, and that will be ongoing. And then collaborate with the town to establish new revenue streams. I think, you know, looking from our perspective, and what you have control over right now as a school committee, is looking at bus fees and technology fees, and, and see whether that's something we're gonna incorporate into next year's budget or not, but having those conversations again, and then identify any additional solar projects that the, um, energy committee can bring forward to us. So we're still kind of waiting on that. We, we thought we would have... We thought we would have solar panels up by now, but we're still waiting on that. So just some next steps and where we're going. Develop a dashboard and launch that. So I had a really good meeting this week with Neil Sonnenberg, who is one of our tech integration specialists at the high school, who does incredible job with Google and data. And he's already started to develop the dashboard for us. I think by our next meeting in October, there'll be a draft template that I'll be able to share with you, take a look at and get your feedback on. But we should be launching this fall with that. He was ahead of the game and really, he does a great job with it and has already started that process. Want to receive that final copy from TLA. They did contact me yesterday and said that it is due on September 21st, the first final draft. So that will be a draft that we can look at, and if, and it's really not content, it's the visual, whether or not you like it or not, so we'll be able to look at that as well. Print up the posters for all classrooms, we talked about. Send the strategic, finish strategic plan to all families and launch that with them through email, posting it on our website, getting it on the community. And then we establish those checkpoints, so September will be that checkpoint each year as we kick off the year, and then a checkpoint again in January where we are, status report in the same for May. So that's kind of the direction that we're going in. It's exciting because it's together and it's, you know, it looks really good. There's a lot of great initiatives for this year. People are excited to get going on it. So happy to answer any questions or any feedback that you have on that.
So the best way to think about this is of a five-year strategic plan, this is the subset of initiatives focused for year one.
For year one.
And, you know, some are very specific line items, others are probably, because it's early and still intentionally a little broad, so...
Some are multi-year. Some you'll see again next year.
So like the transitions one, for example, like you mentioned what has happened about the eighth grade, the counselors meeting with the eighth graders, like that's obviously a great thing. Like, what is the process to explore those additional transition improvements? Is that coming from the principals? Like, where is that coming from?
Yeah, so that'd be leadership and working with our counselors on that, because they have a pretty good handle on those transitions and the issues that come up, because they deal directly with the kids and the families on that. So I think, yeah, that'd be part of our conversations with leadership, and when I report out, it would be kind of what we've done since then, you know, what were some of the things we're looking at, you know, what are the actions that we're going to be doing. So it's going to be all actionable items in that.
Okay. Yeah.
I had two things. One about, so we know, like, I guess kind of what we're saying, we have like start time and bus tech fees, and that'll, some of that'll fall on us. But with the communication thing, who is, it just says like review practices in each building of communication, but we know that's something that a lot of the people we represent care about a lot. But when you're saying, like, who is that leadership working together? Is there going to be like, what's that?
We'll work with a consultant on that.
Okay.
It'll be a professional communication person that will work on that with us.
And will that just be like them and you guys or will townspeople be brought into that or not?
I don't know. I haven't seen any proposal. We haven't put any proposals out yet or anything or asked for that, so.
See what the consultant, who's done this before, okay.
Yeah, there's a couple out there that do this all the time for districts, so.
Okay. My other one, Dr. Morrison, was just about the conferences. So I think that's awesome, because high school, middle school parents don't often get the opportunity other than like an open house that's real quick.
Right.
But it came to my attention that because of middle school and high school, just for anyone listening, there's much, you can't get to all the kids, right? It's not like elementary where you have 22 kids and you can do it. Do you know, like, someone asked me, like, what percent of people, like, like how many slots there are, right? Like, if I'm a math teacher, I have 100 kids.
Right.
How many slots are, and then, because, and I know this is year one, so like, we don't know, like, is everyone just going to run a run to core subjects and maybe the other ones are lighter?
Or is it going to be all the freshman teachers and not seniors?
And the seniors are chilling, right? Because that's how we know open houses go, kind of, and whatever. But so, do you, like, what percent, if everyone wanted to sign up to see every teacher, not possible. Do you know how close we are, like, I just don't know the number of times slots.
Yeah, I don't want to quote the exact number of slots. So I just know that one of the things, because I don't know, remember the exact number of slots, but one of the things that they worked out in the committees is that there's a software that will allow teachers to say, if you have five subjects, you'll be able to see, you know, three of them or something. You know what I mean? So it'll be based on that. So you're not going to be able to see everyone, just for sheer numbers. But I think that, and teachers are not required to meet after school, before school on that, but if parents request that, they could request it, but they're not, it's very clear that they're not required to do that. We have the blocks of time for those times in the fall and the spring, so. Yeah, I mean, it's every high school, every middle school and high school, no one gets to see all their teachers that do conferences, it's just impossible.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's like, I think the messaging around that's going to be to really focus on folks you want to talk to and try to get into those conferences first, you know, and I think that's what it is. But there's going to be, they'll send an email, we have software that does, incredible software that's going to do all this for them, that other districts use, that everyone's successful with it.
Yeah.
So that, again, first year, it's better than not having them, you know.
I just want to say, I think they're awesome, and I wasn't around when you guys got them. So I think it's so great, but then it just came to me that it was a concern, like, you know, if everyone wants to go see their math, because, you know, math could be a subject that's daunting to people.
Right.
But then, as I would say, I imagine all the teachers at Medfield, they don't contract, contractually have to do morning and afternoon, but imagine all the teachers of Medfield will email you back if you don't get in or if you have concerns with your kid, but...
Yeah, and like, if we can't make them do it, because they're not, but they're great. I mean, they give up their time all the time for people, so.
Right, for sure.
I can't, imagine they wouldn't do it.
Sure. Thanks.
Just two comments. One, I actually echoing Will's comment, too. As the, you know, comprehensive communication idea, I think you see the checkpoints in July and, or January and May, which I love. If there's updates on that as that evolves, let us know. Because that's something, I think, when I joined a few years back, it's always been, it's like a mountain that we've really been able to tackle.
I'm curious to the dashboard, you know, what that's going to look like and how you're going to measure the progress, I guess, you know, so I'm sure Neil will work on something, but I'm just curious to say, like, you know, for these bigger headings and each of these subheadings, like 3.1, 3.2, did we miss 3.3?
No, because not all of them are this year. Yeah, so if they're not this year, they're not on there. They could be future years.
I got you. I think so, just, you know, just how to, you know, how to measure the progress, I guess, just, I'd be curious, what's going to be our barometer for...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's why in that October meeting, we'll bring it to you and take a look and look for feedback on it, because it's going to be, you know, we talked about it, you know, Will and Michelle and I talked about some of the ones we liked when we were doing the strategic plan stuff, and you guys might not like that, so we'll, you know, we'll bring it for feedback.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, I know, we had talked about, like, some districts will put green, yellow, red, you know, so maybe haven't started it, yellow, it's in progress, green is done, you know, and that wasn't something that everyone loved. So again, we'll bring a couple of options and take a look at it and see what you think. But I think we'll definitely be ready to launch this this fall, for sure.
Yeah, I was going to...
Based on what I saw yesterday from Neil.
Follow-up on that dashboard. Were you thinking of it for the year or for the overarching strategic plan?
The models we've seen have been for the year, but we could do, we could do a couple different ones.
I'm just wondering, longer term, do they ladder up?
You could communicate that it's not this year.
Because I actually, we'll talk in a couple of minutes about our, you know, the goals, and I love the fact that we're all embracing the strategic plan as a baseline.
Right.
I don't want it to be so structured that sometimes things change, but I do think as you're thinking about a dashboard for a year, it's worthwhile to also be thinking about it as, hey, this is a huge investment.
Year-over-year, yeah.
Year-over-year?
Yeah, I guess maybe you could have, like, if, you know, 3.3 isn't until next year, you know, you just have what it is and say FY, you know, whatever that year's going to be, so that people see the comprehensive dashboard and say, well, what about this?
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah, just to have it there, you know, if the community is going to go hit this thing and we're going to push.
Yeah, so when you see it, you take a look at it, and if it's whatever direction you want to go, then it's fine. We can figure it out. Neil is great with this stuff. If it's a different color or a different structure, we can do it.
The only other question was, is there anything on here as you went through it that you suggested, this one's going to be tough, or areas that you highlighted, say, hey, like, you might need a little bit of support?
I mean, start time is not going to be easy, right? I mean, that's, none of, nothing, none of these changes like this are easy for anyone. So if we get to a point where we're going to make a recommendation to change, well, yeah, we're going to, there's going to be a lot of conversation around that, because it impacts everybody. Impacts elementary, middle, high school, impacts traffic, impacts daycare, teachers, you name it, everybody. So it's not just, you know, changing the times and let's go. There's a lot, a lot of work to do around that, so if you want to do it correctly. So I think that one is, again, it doesn't mean we don't do it, because it's really important, because we know what the research tells us, but it's a lot of work to do that.
No, that one, Michelle was keeping us sharing some links during the summer, or how others have done. We're at the ready.
There's a lot out there.
No, if there's nothing else, no, thank you. I think it's really, really helpful, just to see it laid out this way. Thank you. Appreciate it. So the second piece was the school committee goals. And one I appreciate, this, trying to get to it where it's documented in this way and kind of trying to build a little bit more of a new process. You know, it's helpful to recognize that, you know, that's what it is. It's something a little bit new to do it in this way, and I appreciate and advance the patience. A couple of things that I would like to think about. When Dr. Morrison shares the goals of the school, that doesn't always, you know, there's not direct alignment, right? There should be alignment at a high level, but there are some things that the school committee may need to advance at a different layer and level. So that's why they're, you know, we look at it as different. This was an attempt to kind of like initiate additional structure, but do it in a way that we can adapt in future years. So I don't want to say, hey, this is the way we've done it. You'll see as we talk about it, maybe even, you know, towards the end of the year or over the workshop, how do we report back? How do we do? But I don't want to, I don't want to put too much procedural pieces into it, right? Like, I think it's like, hey, let's give this a shot. I always think about, you know, qualitative, quantitative, exactly how are we going to score, how are we going to be successful? And I think that was the third point. As part of this, and I know some of you shared some feedback, we also looked out, I looked out a fair amount of other schools, how are they doing it? And this model, I think, echoes some of what I saw, which was a little more qualitative than quantitative, to be honest, when looking at success. And my last thought was just, we all should be able to learn from the process, right? As we go through this one year, allow ourselves to adapt and be flexible. So with that, I thought we could, we included in the packet, and thank you for getting that out, but maybe just look at it, each kind of portion of it, read through it quickly, if there's any comments, questions, you know, grade or adjustments, you know, because they're, I'm really kind of a spokesperson of trying to put something together, but they really are committee goals. And process, again, we try to structure them so that they're aligned to the priorities outlined in the strategic plan. We'll attempt to make progress on each goal referenced while remembering that we must fulfill the core duties of the school committee, outlined in the policy manual as our top priority. One thing, and I've learned over the years, if, you know, we get As in all our goals, that's not necessarily a great thing, right? We may or may not achieve them all, we may or may not sometimes priority shift during the year, so recognize that. The guidelines, this is at least something to think about, some of these I saw in some other districts and I parroted, but I think these are important as this, you know, longer-term process goes on. One, the goals should apply to the whole committee. Avoid setting goals that might be very specific or, you know, it's my hotspot, but is it committee? Two, it goes without saying, fall within the school committee purview. We want to be careful so that they don't cross into operational matters or those that are outside the scope of the school committee. Three, you don't want to have 30, 40 goals, right? I'll be honest, initially, I was thinking, I always think in terms of threes, and I wasn't able to achieve that. You know, I think threes is, it's just how I like to live, but try to be, you know, limited in number, in the number and scope, you know, kind of quality over quantity is one of the themes there. And I say, we'd like to attempt to write up the results at the conclusion of the academic year. Exactly what that looks like, I think, will, remains to be seen, but it seemed, to me, it's logical. Maybe that's what we set out to do later in the year, how did we do?
How'd we do, Neil?
So any questions first on either, questions, comments, you know, whatever, on process and/or guidelines?
No, I don't have any questions.
Kind of, but it gets, it leaks into priority one, I think, Tim. But like, when we talked about like start time and the bus fees and like those things and setting up like the committees, and so it's like, if it's, applies the whole, I think those things apply to the whole committee, like school start time, right, or something like that. My question is, the new person, is like, how do we get these set up? Like, if I say, like, I want to run like the bus fees committee, or is that just like Will goes and runs that? Like, how, what elevates something to a committee? And then like, how do we establish it, or like the rules around it?
I'll tell you how I'm, how I think about it is, like, as I, as we went through this, I kind of thought of it as, what are some of the key themes that occurred, you know, last year? And as we were thinking about the agenda for the workshop, there was, you know, I wasn't thinking about it saying, hey, we're going to have a goals process in September, and we'd love to document it, so let's build the workshop with those in mind. I am thinking about it, though, as this evolves, that seems like a natural thing to do, right? If you're thinking about your goals in September, the workshop, you know, sometime in the summer or, you know, late spring might be a great time to kind of prepare for that. Some of the elements in here, though, I think that were, as we discussed it as a group, kind of trying to weigh, you know, how do people feel? Is it hot button for Tim, but nobody else? Or is it, you know, how we're getting? So not an exact science in terms of this qualifies, this does not qualify, other than this discussion. I definitely do think having the strategic plan helps as well. You know, part of what I did, it was kind of interesting, probably not drastically different, was going through the priorities and key strategies. And as we were marking some of these, you're going to see, I was just, okay, that's in the plan, that's in the plan. So trying to mirror that, that there's alignment between that strategic plan. And then within the strategic plan, there are some things that accountability lies more with the administration, others lie more with the school committee. So I was definitely bringing attention into that. But I think the, the last point and the way I was thinking, without, you know, trying to go lose the race with the football game, not saying that, but without, you know, I was going to run through each one of these and just read them quickly, get commentary and hear that feedback, you know, hey, we really missed on this, why is this in there? Or, and we're really missing out if we're going to go after this, like, you know, this is really important. So that's where I say, I do think it's a bit new that I've seen it where we're writing them out clearly, we're discussing them, and the intention is to discuss them later. And that's why I say this is like, and some of this, like, we had a fair amount of discussion with Michelle about it, which may, actually may even, she had a couple of comments during the week as we were going back and forth, but about some different thoughts as we were going through.
But to get to Will's point, though, I think what I'm, what I'm hearing is, depending upon what we agree as a committee are our priorities for the year, which would be reflected in goals, a natural outcome of some of those might be the need to form some kind of a committee, subcommittee on a particular topic, and we would need to say, yes, this, this thing requires that level of investment, and then we would probably have someone champion that and take that and create said subcommittee, right?
I love the question, like, from both of you, because I, in some ways, yeah, I love, I raise my hand, you know, hey, some of them might become, you know, something more sort of formal, others may be, yeah, I'm going to be the go-to around school start times or any of those.
I think what they're asking is, is it...
Do we want to have a member accountable?
Is there like a process to...
Is it going to be a superintendent's task force, is it going to be a school committee, subcommittee? Isn't that what you're asking? Is that?
Yeah, and for like, like, how do, do we have to vote to have a committee? I just don't know how the process works for like, if something's really big, and I think it's big, or someone else doesn't, like how, how is there, yeah, how is their committee, and do we run it, or do you run it, or what happens?
We establish a committee, then that's an official meeting committee,
Okay.
like the building committee, which all the public meeting laws apply.
Okay.
To, if we establish a committee, you just can't go willy-nilly and meet at, you know, the breakfast place. So, all those, that's one thing. So make sure it's important enough for that, because there's the feeding and caring of all that process.
But it falls to the open meeting laws.
Correct.
Versus like, can we not call it a committee, like if just two of us took it on and went for coffee for a smaller issue and we don't call? I just, does that make sense what I'm asking? Because, so I didn't know that.
Like policy, like policy subcommittee, every time we meet, we have, you know, we've got Zoom going.
Right, but that's just like, the two of you doesn't need to be open meeting.
It is a, it is a. It's a subcommittee. It's a policy subcommittee. School building committee, or the school building committee is an official meeting, it's a subcommittee. So, all those exist. My recommend, I don't have any problem with any of these items. My recommendation is to crosswalk them to the strategic plan, because almost all of these fall into a part of the strategic plan. And if we go establish some committee, and then Jeff's got one going because it's part of the strategic plan, those should be aligned. So whatever we do, it should, we should be aligned as one solid.
I would say that typically what takes place is that the school side, the school department, the administration would run a committee and have members of the school committee on it. That's what we typically do.
Okay.
Because to Leo's point, it becomes a subcommittee of the school committee, then it becomes, you know,
Open meeting.
Well, yeah, but, well, which is fine, but then it's, it's just all the regulations that go along with that, the most things and everything else that has to go with that.
Okay. Because I just, if I read the first two, and so I'm jumping ahead, Tim, but it's like, initiate review of start times in partnership with the superintendent, and then collaborate with the superintendent. So in terms of like initiating, reviewing, or collaborate, I just wasn't sure like, if like I can be that, and then you just talk about it, it's fine, or if like,
Well, that's going to be big. So, that one may be.
I don't know the difference between those verbs and what gets elevated and what like, I didn't even know that was, like, I know those were open meetings when you guys did that.
So you have to decide what you want to do. I mean, is it going to be?
So when we look at our goals, yeah, when we look at our goals.
I think what we might want to look at right now is what we have in front of us in regards to goals. Do these make sense for us to take on? And then we can tackle operationally which ones we want to take on and what our approach is going to be.
Oh, yeah, cool.
I think that might be our best.
Yeah, I wasn't as direct at the beginning, but I think, I use the expression when I should, don't look great in having the, you know, full process around goals such that we, you know, getting that exactly right, such that we spend the whole year trying to determine what they are.
Yeah.
You know, I think it is appropriate to call them, you know, goals. In some cases, they're key themes. These are things we're, you know, we're going after. More often than not, they are trying to be aligned to the strategic plan.
Right.
And more often than not, it, by design, it's in partnership or with the administration, with the superintendent, with the community. And in some cases, you know, there are different ways, but somebody, like even, even as we took off and we get into the communicate, or the, the community oriented goals, you know, last year, Michelle took an active role in saying, hey, I think we can be outwardly communicating a little better. You know, like I, I love volunteers, or we love, you know, folks who say, I'd like to be more active. And I think going into subcommittees, excuse me?
Sorry, can I just approve the goals and then figure out how to tackle them next meeting?
I don't know. I actually don't go control approving them, to be honest.
Yeah, I wasn't there. I wasn't even looking to officially vote and approve.
So, like some of these, some of these are expectations of what our role is. So I wanted, and I'll be honest, I didn't look at it before the meeting, so I'd like to flush out and pare it down a little bit. Like, for instance, like the ongoing consideration, the financial support for revision of curriculum and professional development for our staff.
Where are you at?
Goal number three, you know, that's a, you know, that's a, that's part of our role is to support, you know, Dr. Marston is, you know,
But you don't have to support it, I mean.
Well, in the sense of, we're approving the, you bring it to us, you know, I mean, I guess, you know, and we heard, and what we heard today was things about MTSS, and we heard that's just one of our strategic goals. That's going to require the professional development pieces, you know, that kind of, I don't, perhaps we take this opportunity with the setup of the strategic plan and the very structured method that we have, that we're doing with that, and align these as part of that. And literally embed them in there. So that, you know, some of those items in the strategic plan, what's our role in those, in the execution of that, right? And then we ask that question. So, because when I'm, I guess I'm, I'm trying to feel like, what's, what's our role going to be? What our role should always be is to be reflecting with the community, you know, to communicate with the community about these things, right? Now, the big hairy one is going to be school start times, right? So, and that's on our strategic plan as well, right? So that's going to be something that can require a lot of feedback, a lot of communication, a lot of discussion. And some of the others, you know, are they just, are they part of an agenda at a meeting? Are they part of our outreach?
That's how I, yeah, I mean, we can go through each one, but in many cases, I can almost think of something that could be on a goal. And that means we will cover it at least in a meeting. You know, we will, we would talk through that, you know, a couple of them, just starting with goal number one. We've talked about school start times for a while, but we know we need to be active in that process. And initially, it was for Dr. Marston to kind of kick off a process that we have in mind, seemed to make sense. I, I think, you know, and he brought up the schools, the administration goals for the year. Also does mirror collaboration with the superintendent and administration around the evolution of the SEL and or DEI task force. We did not hear enough from them last year, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I think that's something that's important, and I'm suggesting that, yeah, we, I'd like to hear more. In some cases with Dr. Marston, you know, Cheryl watched the recording, you know, we want to also hold him accountable for some of these things. So do we think that, you know, that's important? And, you know, this, we are continuing to be, I've said it many times, be more outwardly facing. And that third goal, continue to review operational meetings, events, and systems with the goal of improving the communication while recognizing or balancing the need to operate in the most efficient and effective manner to support the needs of the school, right? So I think that there, those are, you're right, why is it those three and not three others? You know, I'm, I'm kind of trying to incorporate themes we've had over the last couple of years.
Yeah, no, sorry, I'm not, I think these are good goals. My thing is like, if we're sitting here and we're in charge, like, we've talked about school start times probably for longer than I've lived in town, or, you know, whatever. But like, so now if it's our goal, I'm wondering like, how do we own it and get, like, how do we do it? Like, how do we talk to everyone? Is it informally, is it formally? Like this, again, like, what'd you call it, Leo, the hairy?
Yeah, that's going to be a bigger one.
This is our goal. So like, in June or sometime like this year, if this is our biggest goal, like, how do I get to a place where I'm comfortable with like, we've talked to enough people and we can vote on it? Like, are we doing it or are we not? And I just don't know.
Yeah, the hope on that one is by the, like, and it's consistent with what we just saw from Dr. Marston. He, you know, is a soft target of being able to vote on it in June, which is kind of in line with what we talked about at the workshop.
Yeah.
If there's a lot of resistance in certain areas on that one, you know, like, hey, we may make progress and decide it's not a great time to vote. The community is divided, you know, we're not, we're not there.
To work back from June, right? Let's say, what's working backwards from June, right? Dr. Marston's going to have to circle his team together and break down all the areas that need to be addressed, right? But that's not our role, right? Because that's an operational item. You know, he's going to have to say, sit down with Mike, it's going to be teacher start times and contracts, right? Bussing and transportation, which is going to be huge. What's the impact on the other schools and, you know, their start time? You know, does it mean that the elementary start earlier, right? You know, what is the parent feedback? What about after-school programs and sports and transportation to sports? You know, what's the impact on homework? What are the, you know, what are the teachers, all that data is going to have to be collected and then established, and then pull it together with reporting with parents and feedback from parents and PTOs and all of that big hairy thing is, is going to be the role of the CEO of, organizing that's going to be the CEO of the school department that we've hired. And that would be Dr. Marston, in my opinion. Will we participate in that? Absolutely. I mean, we want to hear it. We'll be in the supermarket getting feedback. We'll be at Blue Moon. People will be calling up on the phone to go back and forth. And we're going to have to record all that and bring that back and, you know, shovel that over to it, this particular one item. So, the other items are similar, but they're just on smaller scales, I guess. Does that sound, am I speaking?
Yeah, I mean, that's part of why I think, again, we're going to also, as I said in the opening remarks, we're going to learn a bit from the process. We haven't followed the same structured process.
I mean, what I'm hearing from you is you're passionate about one of them, I believe it's.
Well, no, but I just, if it's a goal on here that like, I'm responding, if it's one of our goals, I want to know like how we get going, like how do we do it? And like, so we've talked about school start times, at least since I've been here, probably for two years. But has there been like, like, when do we start going? And like, to your point, the phone rings and someone might say something, but like, when do we?
Well, we have it as an agenda item for next meeting, and we, I think we've asked Dr. Marston back in our workshop to do some preparation.
And so that's the stuff Leo's talking about, like all the logistics and timing stuff. Okay, so that's like next step.
So again, that's what I'm saying.
If we don't have next steps, and then all of a sudden it's March, and we like, that's my concern, right? It's just that we haven't done the due diligence.
You're asking the question. That's exactly what, exactly, we're asking the question, yeah.
Yeah, and I do think, like, it's been interesting, as I, as I was reviewing, I went back to, and I was going to include it in here, some of the MASC guidelines that we get. And even in recognition, sometimes, you know, we are, we are elected, but we also have full-time jobs and families. So we want to help drive many of these things forward and support the schools. But I don't know necessarily that we're saying we're getting it in full-blown project planning around these and exactly how are we going to do it. I'm also, it was interesting reading some of the schools. Sometimes the feedback, what they would say is, hey, we didn't have time to address this at the level we wanted to last year. We talked about it, and we just didn't have time. That's okay, right? That, I'm saying to me, hey, I'd rather have, I'd rather overshoot a little than undershoot. But I, you know, I'm okay with that that might happen, right? And, and the why behind that, well, we had massive issues in the school with boilers and other things that took our attention away from that. You know, it opened the schools in the morning.
So, getting back to the ones that were shared, I agree, I think there's, I mean, it's all very reasonable and good. I think maybe to Leo's point, some of them, some of them just feel like part of our responsibility, just ongoing as a school committee as opposed to a specific goal. So I think I'm leaning towards the ones that do feel like they are, they are a very specific measurable goal. And maybe we can, you know, we're going to obviously continue to talk about them and evolve them.
I mean, I think maybe we will, you know, like, I was, I was targeting to get feedback on things that are violently missing or not missing, and I think I'm hearing high level, the feedback from few is the process we is, we don't have enough structure and controls around success or failure.
Yeah, I think the only, like, specific things like, you know, I think this one might come from my list specifically about the, you know, what other materials we can be sharing proactively. And I think one of the things I talked to you about, Tim, is I would love to see kind of like a, and it will, it will probably tie very much to these goals, but almost like the project list of the school committee that, you know, anyone in the community could look and see like, oh, you know, this is who's involved and who's kind of keeping a watchful eye on the topic of enrollments, and this is who's like, you know, just so that people can also understand, you know, if there's a particular member of the committee who is, has a focus on a particular project, that that's clear. So I would love to see that also, just, you know, maybe we, just like looking at the website as a whole and thinking about what other content we can put up there. I think about like projects and project ownership is super helpful.
Have you looked at other school committee websites and seen that level of detail on, there's somebody on the committee that's directly involved with enrollment?
I haven't looked for that specifically. I've looked at some sites that have some really thorough content available. What was the one I sent to you? Was it?
Cohasset was related to the goals.
I thought that they also, their whole site, they had quite a bit of information there. So I've just, it sounds like we want to cover that. I'm just like, I'm looking at the next level down.
It's a good point, and I, I actually also, I looked at some districts, and some were best in class
Yeah.
in terms of, you know, this is what we're going to do, here's who's accountable for it, and it's whether it's accountability to the school or to different areas. You know, it could have been to a school or an initiative or a project. Most don't, right? And what I'm suggesting, you also look at, at school committee's documentation of goals every year. You start to see, you're not going to see it in all of them, and more often than not, those that had them, they weren't always every single year.
Yeah.
So my suggestion, as I say, is, I think of it as a starting point to move us closer to that. So, and Kristen, I actually agree, if you saw me in my professional world, projects and trying to build up a plan is core to what we do. I also think we have to recognize, like, the school committee operates in a certain way now to keep the schools running. And I don't want to drastically veer from that.
Well, I want to be cautious that we've just presented a very large strategic plan. That is going to take a lot of time. The action items that are in this, these goals will ultimately impact the same people going to be encountering that strategic plan, I guess. And so I caution us to just keep that in mind as we engage in that. Because there is the day-to-day operations of the school district, and then the, you know, the backing up and the communication back and forth administration to us. You know, and the, there's a building project underway or a committee that's all by itself. We already have our other initiatives or engaged in which are part of these goals. So I think it's, I think it's maybe taking these and boiling them down maybe a little more finite, or a little less, I don't know, I don't know the word I'm looking for.
I think, I mean, specifically, I like number one, would like to figure out what the detail between the second bullet really means. I think on number two, there's a lot of very good tactical things, and I'm a tactical thinker, so I like that one. Like I said, definitely would like to explore what else we could be publishing. Another one that I would try to, I'd try to squeeze it into community engagement, if you let me. I think I put it under supporting students. But I just think it's really important, and I think it's a measurable thing where we hold ourselves to participating in a number of activities during the calendar year. And I think for most of us, we're probably doing it anyway. I'm just saying, I think that would be a fine formal goal, because I think it's important that we are going to the concerts and volunteering in the schools and visiting the art shows and being present, not just for the kids, but that, you know, their parents as well. So, to me, like, that's a great goal to say, you know, it's, hey, we're going to commit to at least this. And like I said, most of us probably do twice that much anyway. But I think it just encourages making sure that, you know, we're out there and we're listening and we're hearing and we're participating. We're seeing all the great stuff the kids are doing and that the, that the teachers are doing, and it could be anything. I mean, you know, I know some of it we all already do, like go to graduation or what have you, but, I don't know. I just, I love that one selfishly, so I could probably argue it could be squeezed in as a sub-bullet on number two, just saying. And number three was the one, I guess I was feeling a little bit like, maybe where I thought Leo was going, which sort of just felt like it was almost restating a little bit of what our responsibilities are. So I didn't know if there was a specific thing related to the curriculum that we were calling out as a goal for this year.
I think, yeah, on number three, the, there was some discussion with Dr. Marston on that as well as there may be some other areas like similar to, I think it was the math, the program last year where we were, we were a partner. And we did provide, eventually provide financial support. I think it's, it's, you know, to be candid on, again, we tried to ladder up to that strategic plan. And there was a couple in there that I think it said to, hey, that this is, you know, this is something that may happen that we would wind up being supportive, supporting or, you know, partnering in order to make some decisions. So, let me just see, so that was one, two. So I do hear the, you want to be very measurable with what events we may or may not choose to go to.
Are you saying quantity, like we each commit to going to X amount?
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't hate that. I think that's actually a good one.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, uh,
I said, for most of us, probably doing it anyway, but I think it just should be a standard. If you're going to be, you know, participating in the committee that we're part of all the activity. Maybe I should be part of less activity if we're being. Maybe I should be part of less activity, if we're being honest. I think, I think I cursed the school today.
Yeah, so why don't we leave it, I, I think the feedback is good, and my opening remarks were it's a learning process to try to bring a little bit more structure to a process. I think the, again, I want to balance the amount of time we, you know, spend trying to figure out what are our goals. You know, like, there, there was, I think, Michelle, you and I went back and forth, do we want to stay more around threes? And, you know, hey, these are some of the bigger things we think we want to do, or do we want to get more specific? Which is, again, laddering up to that strategic plan. I, I didn't look at it as, as a right or wrong answer.
I would say the other thing we talked about too was because this is kind of the first time doing this for all of us, right? Like, writing them down in this form, is that maybe one of the goals is to like, have a process around this, but instead of focusing so hard on like, this is a goal and we have to execute against it, understanding that we're going to be forgiving, because maybe one of our goals is, this is like our pilot program that we can then iterate on in future years, on like what worked and what didn't work. You know, kind of what Tim was saying, like, it is, I was, because I was reading them as well, like, there were districts that were kind of like, you know what? We didn't, we spent some time on this in the fall, and then something happened in the winter, the spring, and we're going to revisit that next year, right? So instead of saying like, we're committing to all these, they're all gonna be done in June, like, understanding that like, these are aspirational and what we want to accomplish together as a group, and I guess kind of also allowing us to have a little bit more of a, a collective map or a compass to keep us aligned on what we want to be getting feedback from people about, right? Like, and, and helping people, and, and what we want to be communicating out to them collectively as a body, right? Because I think, you know, each of us is one-fifth of this, but when we're out there talking or, you know, talking to different people and stuff, I think it's important for us to understand what we're all working on together.
I also think that you just hit, you hit the nail on the head on something extremely important. And that is, these goals, where are they coming from? What is the source of these goals? What is the data we're using to produce them? How do we know, how do we know school start time's important? We know it's important because it's an important item. Is it important to our community, right? How do we know?
I, if you're gonna go on to school start times, I, I look at more of the data around sleep and, and the age of the students.
That's the why, that's why we're putting it out there.
Yeah.
Right?
So.
But we could get, one month into this, and this room will be filled, because when there's something, when there's a button item, that's what fills this. How I got here, it's class size.
Class size.
Right? And, and that's what I'm saying, like, so I think the communications part, one of our goals should be, is better feedback loops, more open feedback loops to get information on a more regular basis. Maybe it's not just.
But I mean, I can't, I don't think, and I'm just taking that particular issue. I don't think we can start with making the assumption that we're gonna change the school times.
Right.
You know, that it's part of the process of looking at, yeah, we read the data, we read the, we know the research, but maybe that doesn't work here, to your point. Maybe it doesn't, and that's what we find out as part of that process, and maybe it does work, maybe everyone wants it, which is great.
That was on an early agenda.
Maybe seventy, thirty, who knows, right? But I think that's part of the process is finding out, you know, what the, what the feedback is. Like, on the school start times, I, I think part of our, you know, as leaders, to me, the lesser evil is to at least bring it forward if, if, you know, we, we think, hey, this is, is worth pursuing, and discovering that the community's not behind it.
Right, oh, yeah.
Like, that, that, and, and that's, you know, that, that's what I'm saying. I do also, and, and I think this conversation's important, you know, when we think about how data-driven are we in order to get that into the goal, is qualitative, is quantitative? This was a little more written, steered towards qualitative. And I also do think, though, like, we've got the superintendent's goals, we've got, we've got many other processes, we've got a scorecard going on around the, the strategic plan, where I was trying to, you know, my, my suggestion or thought was, I don't know that I want something so heavily structured on quantitative for running this school committee. I, I know with, a few years ago, as COVID hit, if we set out with those goals and then, you know, how, how the business of the school committee.
Because the most important role of the school committee during COVID was to communicate and make sure school continued, and we communicated with the community. That became our number one goal during COVID.
Correct.
Because it took us, it took its place. What I, what I got really nervous was, is when Will just said, let's get cracking on these things, we're gonna burn this list down.
Yeah, that's how, when I see goals too, but now, you all said it, like, it's okay if we don't get our goals done, that's like, not what I, like, when you said this, I looked at these, I was like, alright, these are our goals to get done this year.
That's right.
If nothing, if COVID doesn't, whatever, if nothing crazy goes on, let's get these done, and that's where I'm coming from, like, how do we do it? But if we give ourselves enough grace to like, not get them all done, then it's a different conversation.
Yeah, I think, you know, I also, we have a few other items and, and I want to mention, I think it's, it's a good conversation, and I, I, I'm not sure if you have any other comments. I, I was gonna say we, we revisit this, you know, it's, it's old business at this stage, but.
Like, what do you guys feel next steps should be? I think that would be the question I want, I, I want to know from you, from everybody. Like, what do they feel next steps are based on, you know, what we've talked about so far, and what we've talked about tonight, and like, your thoughts, I guess?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at this as a good draft. I think there's probably a couple points, like, I, I have some additional questions on, like, just to understand the real meaning of it. There's a couple things I might want to layer in. Because I would suggest that three maybe isn't even a thing unless we have a specific goal around it, which maybe we do, and I just didn't read it from that. But my sense is, you know, we get you feedback on this draft, basically, and then come up with a, a second draft. That's what I, I guess I would suggest.
I agree.
Second, with that, my, again, I just want to make sure, and one of the things Tim and I talked about is because, and this is why we mentioned the summer retreat and talking about like, having a goals process that maybe we iterate on, it doesn't feel to me that we're doing a service to the district if we don't finalize a set of goals till January with the intent of them being accomplished in a school year. So in that space, I am a little bit with Will, like, okay, let's go, fire it off, like, what can we get done? So I agree that we should move forward with another draft, but I do, like, what are our plans in regards to like, how we're gonna work against them after that, and I know we said we would talk about process later, but I do want to make sure that we're not drafting and drafting and drafting and drafting and drafting.
My recommendation is to, is to align these items, condense and align, or align them to the strategic plan, and then decide what our role is going to be in the execution.
I think they are aligned to the strategic plan.
I would, that's what I mean, like, on, on the site.
He wants it on the scorecard.
Let's put the plan on a scorecard so we can keep track of our progress, right?
Yeah, so I, and I'll, I think, because an alternative, which I think is okay and worth discussion, is focusing on a process that we're all comfortable with, that will be sustainable over time. Which I'm, I'm also saying, look, hey, you know what, this is, these are some of the key themes and things we want to achieve. You know, like, and soften it, because I'm, I'm just nervous that there's a scorecard for us, there's a scorecard for the district, there's a scorecard for the superintendent. I, I've seen it in my, in my corporate business, sometimes people are.
You put those two together, the strategic plan is our, those are our goals. We work together on the goals, right? We hire someone to flush it all out with the community. Those should be our goals.
Agreed.
Yeah.
But, but what I wonder is, is, is there in a given year areas that the school committee says we may need to be putting more of our energy and focus here, which might be different? Like, if I look at the strategic plan, there is a category that says it's accountability, and the school committee is not listed on every line item there. Right? So, so, you know, I, I, what I like, one of the goals here was to develop a scorecard and monitor progress against the strategic plan and communicate the progress during the year. Like, that, I think, is important to us, that the process, that the, the scorecard is being.
Sure, and that's why I brought up the metrics piece, right? What is the metrics of, you know, the qual, you know, qualitative and quantitative? It's gonna be very qualitative on whether or not we've met the goals, you know, that are in the strategic plan, right? But, but what are those measurements gonna be? What are those measurements gonna be for our success on meeting these goals? What is our measurement?
So why, why don't we do this? So we, we got the, just, just had the draft as part of the packet, so haven't really had a chance to send any feedback. I have no interest in prolonging. I think we need to put a mark in the stake in the ground, mark in the sand. There's a lot of things we can do with that, right? We're getting late. So I have no desire to prolong and like, overthink it, and believe me, I'm the classic over thinker, but can we just get you feedback on this and create a second draft from it? It, it does align to the strategic plan, maybe there's a way to do that more specifically so that you can see it.
Well, I know, it's part of the scorecard, let's make it part of the scorecard, you know?
And then we come back and review it.
Yeah, no, it sounds fair.
I mean, what are we calling it? Is it called a scorecard? What are you calling it? The thing that Neil's building?
Dashboard.
The dashboard, yeah.
Alright, that sounds good.
That way, that way the community only has one spot to go to. Got three different spots to go to.
I, I, I think it's worthwhile, share feedback, and I also, I would even say too, if there's one or two that really jump off the page, is like, hey, this is, this is one that's so, that's so important, let us.
Yeah, that might be good too, when you, maybe with a feedback prioritization, right? And that might actually be quick to think about.
That's easy, that's number two. Easy for me.
Well, and I'm not saying number, like, priority one and two, I'm saying is there a specific?
No, I know. Oh, within it, yeah, yeah, fair enough.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for drafting it and sharing it and putting so much thought into it.
Oh, yeah, no question. Okay, I'm kind of going into it, I know there's, there's some risk, and bringing, bringing something forward is a little, a little different, and it's worthwhile to do so. So the SBC update, I know we've had some progress, but we're.
The SBC is going to be at Medfield Day. So our last meeting, we spent a lot of time discussing our booth and the handouts we're gonna have. We're gonna have one that kind of discusses what's happened in the process so far for us, and another that's on the MSBA, just trying to help educate the community again a little bit more about the SBA. Kristen sent out a nice sign-up genius to kind of get us all coordinated to be there and working that day. The other thing we talked about was tentatively having a joint meeting with the SBC, the school committee, and the select board on November seventh at Dale Street. So the concept there, the SBC is required to give an update to the select board every six months, so the concept was kind of to expand on that and make it more of a joint meeting or a joint forum in which the SBC would present what they had been working on, allow all governing bodies to hear the information, ask questions, but also the public would be able to give feedback, ask questions, share thoughts, and things of that nature. So those are kind of the two big things that came out of our last meeting, Medfield Day, and tentative November seventh. But we're still waiting, I think, on a few people to get back to us, so.
And Mike's coordinating the timing of that one, correct?
That's exciting.
Yeah, what, you know, Dr. Marsden, I'll direct it towards you, the MSBA, what's the, like, when's the next time we might hear something? Or November, November? Communication, or community engagement and communication.
I attended my PTO meeting today.
Oh, you did?
I was at Memorial this morning with twenty-six other parents. It was a very healthy turnout. It was good, it was good to hear how things are going. I feel like one of the biggest initiatives that the Memorial PTO has taken on over the past few years has been updating the Memorial Playground to make it more accessible, so they did some great work last year to, and they were able to add, let's see, something called a Volta Inclusive Spinner, an ADA-compliant swing, and also, it's a ADA grass mat that allows children that have mobile devices to be able to get out and play on the playground, because they weren't able to do that before previously, teachers would carry them out. So that's where they're at right now. They have a, a good goal monetarily-wise. Their, their concept right now is to replace pieces as they can versus doing kind of what Hinckley is, which is one big sweep. They're keeping in mind that, because we don't know what's gonna happen with the new school, that the company they're working with, every piece is movable to go to a new playground if something were to happen where the Memorial Playground has to be parking or something like that, right? So, yeah, so it was great to hear what they've done. I thought it was a really positive meeting. Overall, overall, good, good vibe, so it was good to, good to get in there. See you, everybody.
We had a, there was a Cub Scout meeting at Memorial last night, and we were going in as open house, people were coming out, and there were a ton of people. I was talking to Missy.
And that was just half of them.
Hugely popular.
Broken up by last names.
Yeah, two nights, right, yeah.
Oh, by last name, so A to L in the beginning, and then the rest in the afternoon, and after that, so.
Yeah, I was gonna say open house for informational, but I can talk about that as well, because I've been to a lot of schools this week. So Dale Open House was on Tuesday night, and Memorial Open House was last night, so I have a fifth grader and a kindergartner. I went with my fifth grader to Dale, and my husband went with my kindergarten and Memorial. I'm not gonna lie, I was a little skeptical about the new approach. So the new concept is you bring your child, and you have like a scavenger hunt, and you go around to the school with your child. But seeing it through my son's eyes, I thought was, it was amazing. He was focused on showing and highlighting things that I wouldn't have been on my radar, that I wouldn't have necessarily been paying attention to. He got really excited about his classroom and showing me his locker and taking me to the Maker Space and the quote-unquote, "old-timey" water fountain that's across from his hall.
Old-timey.
He was like, Mom, it's just like, it's old-timey, like, you have to see this, and I was like, I looked at it, and I was like, it's okay, it's a water fountain, like. So I thought that was really great, and I really.
It's actually bubbler, but that's okay. If you grew up around here, it's bubbler.
Generally, I just appreciated the perspective and engagement, and then my husband went with my kindergartner, and I was, I told him to like, take notes so we could compare when he get home, because they've only been in school for a week. So again, I wasn't sure how this was gonna go, but he was like, it was, he thought it was adorable, he thought it was great that the kids were just so excited. The scavenger hunt, I think, was a really great way for, to build on community, because you were creating these ways for people to bump into each other, right, these collision opportunities that I think just helped elevate the energy and like, the vibe of the, of the thing. So I thought that was like, kind of a subtle point, but I thought it was really well done and kind of aided in the, the positive energy. I talked to some parents since then. One parent did say that she missed not getting the like, slides from her teacher, but then another parent said that their teacher sent the slides from last year, right? So like, you usually sit up there and the teacher gives a presentation. So the art teacher and the Spanish teacher at Dale did give out like a one-page room what's, what's gonna happen this year for fourth and fifth grade, so I think the only feedback might be something like that, like, for everybody coming in, like, this is maybe the presentation you would have seen previously. But yeah, I thought it just was, I really loved that it was child-led and the community feel around it, and I thought it was really, it was fun. I don't know, what did, I saw you, so what did you think?
It was great.
Yeah.
You can see the, the passion comes through the kids when they like, explain it versus just sitting there with like, twelve adults and a teacher. It's like, this is what I do versus my daughter glowing and showing me how math works with
Right.
the hell they're doing volume.
Yeah, they were so, so proud of themselves, it was really, it was awesome.
You did a great job with it, you really did.
Yeah, they did, I agree.
So I'm gonna go to Monday pin night at Blake, and it's gonna be the old-fashioned way, that's what you're saying.
It's the old-timey.
The old-timey way, watching some presentations from my kid's chair.
But you're gonna be in a, you could be in a brand-new auditorium, you can check it out.
That's true.
The seats in?
Everything's in, it's all done, it's beautiful. It was really nice. One other comment on, on community too, I had a conversation with Nicole, she's one of the leaders of the PTO, president of, you know, school-wide, at least, the elementary side, and, you know, it was helpful. It was, it was more focused on how can we continue to be more engaged and continue to, you know, make sure that, that we, we are getting signal from, from the parents, so that, you know, there's a couple ideas we talked about that I think we can revisit right now, but, you know, I, I, I think, I've said that, I think next week or next meeting, or at some point, we get, when you bring up the, the the principals to talk about the opening, you know, we are continuing, you know, that, that's an area to me that's community and community within each school and making sure that they continue to have a voice. So that, that's, that's one area that I, I would like to see us continue to maintain some focus and doing, you know, doing more with that, and by all means, the stories and the open houses are, sound fantastic.
Yeah, it's fun.
Yeah, it was great. We'll look next week.
I'm very excited, I get to go, because my husband's traveling, so I'm excited about it.
And I think that, actually, we did kind of zero in into informational items, because I think as we, as we talked about that, is, is there any other informational items?
I just wanna mention that we did our safety drills today in all five schools. Um, I wanna thank the police department for always working with us on that, and I know two of you got to experience it two different ways.
During the PTO meeting.
Yes, during the PTO meeting. But our kids did a great job. We identified a couple of things that we need to, to do differently. And, um, it's just amazing how well our kids, uh, do on that and our teachers and so it's, it's unfortunate we have to do it, but, uh, we have to prepare for whatever we need to prepare for, so.
I've only lost one toaster oven.
Yeah, that was after.
A toaster oven.
A toaster oven.
That was, that was actually a real fire drill, man.
I looked up at Nat's face and he was like, oh, that, this one's not a drill, we're going, we're going out.
So I wanna thank everybody for their help on that.
Okay, and, um, future agenda items, I think, uh, that is, you know, that next meeting can, can get dense. Um, so I think I do wanna call out it's, it's future agenda items, we, we may or may not choose to get every single one of them. Um, and I added, um, and if, if we can, um, to presume we have the school committee goals, um, you know, continuing that dialogue, I, I added that in mind.
So which of these, Tim, are we committed to for the next meeting?
I'll give you my opinion and then, um, you know, you guys can, can weigh in. I think school start times is, is a high, high priority. I think principal opening reports, provided they feel like they've got enough, and the opening's far enough behind, and I just want, I don't wanna
It'd have to be October, November, like we did last year.
Yeah, typically breaking that down.
Cause if it was one night, it's just a lot. All five of them to
I, I think continuing the conversation on SC goals and either kinda trying to come to a conclusion, which, which again, I, I think is, is worthwhile as opposed to, you know, like finalizing goals and later in the year. And I think, you know, the, the policy manual project should be a quick update. There's not, there's not much there, Leo, Leo and I, I think we, uh, Jim Hardy is going away, um, so we're, we're, or he was out on
Yeah, I thought that'd be mail through.
so we, we should have an update, but that's, should be quick. District fees and cell phone policies, I think, are worthwhile. I think there's, one of those is, um, on the cell phone. I think you, you were gonna be doing a little bit of some data, yeah, research, so.
Then we, we're gonna do the enrollment, public, uh, private school update from the spring.
Right. That is, and I, I wanted also, if that's, that's on there. Is the enrollment, is the driver behind it more, or work we're doing with the SBC, or is
No, this is the follow-up from the spring to say, here's what we thought was gonna happen, here's what really happened, and see if there's any additional inputs that we got from the community if they chose to participate in the survey, if they left the district. So this is the, this is the follow-up from the spring conversation to say, did it happen the way we expected it would happen?
So I, I'm supportive of the topic, provided we have the data.
Well, just get the, yeah.
We're, we're, we're gonna review the data, so it's
The data's reported to the state.
Yeah, we also have the data from the parents that looked, explored private schools in state and Medfield. So that was the second survey that went on.
Yes. So we, that, we just need to do the recap on that, we just said we would.
So I
Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask you, we're talking about the future stuff, with the principals, have we split them up? Cause five's a lot, it sounds like.
Yeah, they do split them up.
Can we, could we, if it's possible, to have, uh, like high school and middle school here and then they could help? Do, would they help to be here, Dr. Marzen, with the cell phone stuff? Or will you have all that data from them?
I'll have the data, but you can, you can talk to them about it.
Yeah, but I just don't know if it would help if like, we did those on the same night, whether it's October or November. Uh, but if you have, we gotta speak for their data, it doesn't matter, but
I think that makes sense to have them here.
Okay, yeah, so we can just target that, whether it's October or November, Tim, but cell phone policy with the, the higher-up principals.
Yeah, and I, I think also, I'll be honest, um, we, we may wanna just think about the wording, I, I didn't notice it before. I don't know if I'm quite at cell phone policies, you know, um, you know, I, I don't know that it's, it's to that, it's, it's, you know, cell phone or mobile. Um, cause I, I don't think right now we're, we're at that stage of it. Um, but I love the idea of, of a sort of feasible, you know, start with the middle school and high school. Um, okay, and, you know, uh, to circle back, hey, if you can put all of these on and get through them, great, right? And the only thing I always say is make sure we're also, like, we didn't know last month that Denise was gonna reach out.
Right.
Right, so just continuing to allow ourselves to, to flex a little. Uh, other than that, is there, I think that's everything on our agenda, it's already covered, Madison's posting, so, um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Don't move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And have a score or a tie, we're losing six, nothing.